Hello everyone and welcome to the September 20th Decaturish Twitch Show. I'm your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wisenhunt. Today's show is going to be the forum for the Avondale Estates City Commission election. The candidates who are joining us today are Commissioner Lisa Shortell. Commissioner Shortell, how are you?
I'm good. How about you, Dan?
Cannot complain. And Commissioner Lionel Lorette. Lionel, how are you, sir?
Terrific. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for joining us, Commissioner. Ricardo Israel Corn is also running. He was invited. He declined to attend our show, but we did send him a Zoom link. He did respond to our Q and A, so we're going to publish that on October 1 when we publish our Voters Guide. There are two seats on the City Commission that are going to be on the ballot in November. And the Commissioners in Avondale Estates are all elected at large and not for specific districts. So the three candidates that are running for two seats, the winners will be the two of those three candidates who get the most votes. So it's almost like a musical chairs thing going on in Avondale Estates. It kind of works that way in Clarkston too, except there are only three here as opposed to like the seven that are in Clarkston. All of our coverage is going to be found at decaturishvotes.com. And I want to add, if you like what we're doing, if you're watching this right now and you appreciate the coverage that we do, the forums that we provide, go ahead and visit supportmyloca news.com. You see a little ad for it on your right. Become a paying supporter of Decaturish. We need your help, especially now. Now that the height of the pandemic's over, news readership has slowed down as one would expect. It's not so much doom scrolling as it used to be. But we definitely need your support to continue, you know, hiring people, sending reporters to meetings, putting on forums like this, and you can sign up for just as little as three bucks a month. You could spend more of that on a cup of coffee at Starbucks. So if you are so inclined, please go and visit supportmyloca news.com right now and sign up and become a paying supporter. With that out of the way, I'm going to give each of our candidates three minutes to make an opening statement. And then we're going to go into our Q and A, and we're going to start that Q and A with a little bit of breaking news. But I'm going to let them get their opening statements out of the way first. So Commissioner Shortell, we'll start with you. Three minutes.
Okay, so yeah, so just found out about the three minute statement, so didn't prepare anything, but I'll just jump right in. You know, when I ran four years ago, I ran with some very clear objectives. And I would say that one of the most clear objectives that I had for myself was, I really wanted to make sure that our city government was following the citizen input and making decisions based on citizen input that we had been reflected in our downtown master plan and our comprehensive plan. Now, why was that so important to me? It was important to me because I had become involved quite a bit in city business for quite, you know, maybe five years, five or six years before I ever ran for election. And I did see situations where that wasn't happening. And so that was one of the main reasons that I ran. I want to say that I feel like we've made a lot of progress in the last four years. I'm really behind our strategy that we are using in the downtown. It's a strategy of investment in the downtown and investment in place making. So that, you know, we can build up our downtown, but also so that we can diversify our tax base, which will in the end benefit the entire city. You know, there's tons of benefits to developing the downtown, you know, diversity of housing, being more connected with other areas around us. And I could go on and on about that, but I may have some questions about that later. So really, the reason I'm running again is to kind of see that continue. I feel like we're kind of on this, climbing up this hill and we're getting to the point where we're really going to start to reap the benefits of what we've been doing. And I want to see that focus and comprehensive approach maintained. And lastly, I'll just say, you know what, I really enjoyed being a commissioner. I like talking to people. I like hearing their ideas. I like working with the team. I like weighing pros and cons and, you know, looking at all of the information and trying to figure out what I think is best for the long-term health of Avondale. And so I enjoy it. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve the community. How much time I got left, Dan?
Ten seconds.
Okay, I'll just cut it off there. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lorette, three minutes for you, sir.
Yeah, so you know, first, thank you for putting this together. But what I am going to say is that, you know, it's been excellent being a commissioner. I enjoy the work. I enjoy talking to people, excuse me. And it also allowed me to put some things into practice in the public sphere that I had been practicing in the private sector for many years. The first is servant leadership, which is my leadership style. I tell everyone that I hire that that is my leadership style. What that means is that very simply, leaders eat less. The goal is never my goals, that they're never what I can accomplish for myself. The goal is what I can accomplish, what I can help the city accomplish. And, you know, that just falls in line with that philosophy. And, you know, I'll just go into a couple of more things about my leadership philosophy is, you know, essentially, I find it rewarding to work with teams. I will find it rewarding to listen to different opinions. And that goes into the second part of my leadership philosophy, which is that I should strive to be humble. I should strive to be a hard worker and I should strive to be intelligent. Those three qualities are what I look for in people I hire. And they are the qualities that I try to embody in myself in my role as commissioner. So for the next four years, why do I want to continue being a commissioner? The next four years, I have three things that I would like to focus on. The first is diversity in the, in Avondale Estates. And the reason why? Because our demographics are changing. We can't ignore that. And I think that being a more welcoming city is a good strategy to work with. The second is I want to shift focus a little bit from the Central Business District to residential infrastructure. I think there are a lot of things that we have been working on, stormwater preeminently, that we've been working on, and I know all the Commissioners are with me on this. We do have to do something about that so that the residents have a better life, their lives are enhanced. And the third is resident participation. I do believe that the more I hear from residents, the more we hear from residents and the more residents participate in government, the better it is for them. So in a nutshell, that is why I'm running. Well, you know, I think what we have to...
Hey, I'm so sorry, Commissioner Lorette. Let me, let me, I had myself on mute. Let me, let me say it again for people who couldn't hear. The short version of it is, the police chief announced he's retiring today. The accreditation manager has turned in his resignation because the department tried to and failed to achieve accreditation. It was something the department was seeking amid calls for a review of its police policies back in 2020 during all the protests. So I was on mute when I read all that and I really apologize. So Commissioner Lorette, what's your, what's your reaction to the news that the police chief is going to retire and the accreditation manager has turned in his resignation following the certification issue?
Okay, yeah, so I think, well, not I think, I know that my immediate reaction is that the members of our community who have been calling for police reform over the past year, 18 months, however long it's been, that essentially they, they've made a case for themselves. In my response to this, however, is that, you know, in my view, just as, you know, we expanded City Hall to add resources so that we could successfully tackle the development that's going on in the Central Business District, that was a strategic move to meet a challenge. And in my view, going for police reform is not so much, you know, as the, you know, you know, the height of, you know, Black Lives Matter or anything else. But I look at it from a strategic point of view. As I mentioned before, demographics in the city are changing. There are many things in the city that are not the same as they were 10, 20 or 30 years ago. And it would be short sighted to say that you're not going to undertake a strategic review of the police as part of that. It's in the fabric of our community. It's an important part of our community. And, you know, we do have to take a strategic view and review it. The police chief has resigned. Okay. I think that what we need to make sure of is that the next police chief, as we undergo this search, is a visionary who understands that in the 21st century, you have to operate under a different set of rules than you did in the 20th century.
Thank you. Commissioner Shortell, same for you. Three minutes. What's your reaction to the, the news at a City Hall today that the police chief is going to retire and the accreditation manager has turned in his resignation following the department's failure to achieve accreditation? Three minutes.
So my, you know, I support police officers. They have a really tough job. I feel like they, you know, our police officers have a lot of support in our community. I feel like our residents have, and the boards, not just this board, passports, have supported our police department with, you know, good budgets and new equipment every year. And I'm actually very sad and disappointed to have had this outcome. You know, I am sort of like Lionel on this. I believe, and I've said it in a lot of my campaign material, I, I believe in policy and procedure review across the board in Avondale. And I think it's something we should be doing periodically. And I think this is a part of that. And apparently, unfortunately, it's pretty clear that some things need to improve and changes need to be made. And, you know, that's my reaction. I'm sad. I'm disappointed. I'm really disappointed. I thought there probably would be, you know, a different outcome on that. But I, I support change and I support looking at the facts and I support following the evidence and making those changes.
Yeah, just, just my recollection of it, it seemed like everything was on track. Until quite recently, I mean, the last I'd heard is that was still a go and then it seems like it's all falling apart. Do either of you happen to know why the accreditation wasn't obtained? Is that something you can discuss?
Well, I was going to say honestly, until about a half hour before we got on here, I had not seen the report, only heard that it was received. And I got the press release and the report in my inbox just as it went up on the website. So, you know, right now about the only thing I can say is that it didn't pass. I'm not sure what the particulars are at the, at the moment.
Yeah, I agree with Lionel on that. I just, I saw the press report at the same time everyone else was receiving it. And there, I believe there is a copy of the report attached to that.
Yeah, I haven't seen the report yet, but I'm going to go back and look for it.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to review the whole thing, but yeah.
Okay, well, moving along, we got a question from a reader. And we're going to start with Commissioner Lorette. Commissioner Lorette, what is your view of the road diet there on Avondale, on College Avenue in Avondale Estates? And what are the next steps needed to make that happen? Three minutes?
Sure. I agree with the road diet. I think it is going to slow down traffic a little bit. What's going to happen to that traffic? I think we've had studies done that showed that there would be a terrible impact on the residential side of the neighborhood. What it takes to make that happen is something that I am keeping an eye on. And what I am concerned about primarily is the impact to the small businesses that line the avenue and also operate in the Central Business District. What I'm looking forward to getting, and I'm sure we're going to get it at some point, I just don't know when, is a plan on how to mitigate the effects of diminishing that traffic during the period that they will be building out. And that's something important to me is that I want to keep mom and pop shops in Avondale Estates. I think that's, that's one thing that makes us unique. So really, that's, that's where I am on the road diet.
Commissioner Shortell, same, same question to you. What's your take of the, on the road diet there in College Avenue and what is the next step that, to make that happen?
So I completely support the road diet. I like to call it complete, complete street project or multimodal, which means we're making the street safe for everyone, pedestrians, bicyclists and cars. You know, this is an eight-year project or so. We have received a large amount of grants, far over 50%. I think it's probably something like 80 or 90% of the funding has been in grants. The city's putting up, you know, maybe 10 to 20% of the funding to accomplish this huge project. What are the next steps to get there? Is that the other part of the question?
Yeah, what is it, what is it going to take to make it happen?
Yeah, I think, you know, this is our main street. We need to make it safe. We are almost at the end of the project. We are in the process of doing right-of-way acquisition, which will involve negotiating with property owners along Highway 278 to purchase their property. Again, we have some funds and grants provided to help us do that. And we're waiting to see, you know, whether we can acquire everything we need with those funds or that we will have to supplement them. But beyond that, as soon as that is done, and there's also a signaling project that we are finalists for so that all signals will be synchronized at the same time the road diet happens. We're going to start construction next year in 2022. So we're at the tail end of a very large, very big project. And to Lionel's point, yes, we all have concerns about the businesses. My understanding is we will see a plan that's coordinated by the city and the construction will be happening block by block or section by section. So that businesses will only be impacted for that particular time and then, you know, it'll move down instead of it being in front of their store, in front of their restaurant for long periods of time.
Okay. Commissioner Shortell, we're going to start this next question with you. The City Commission has previously discussed the Public Works building and options to renovate that existing building or find a new facility. What are your goals for the building in the Public Works Department? Three minutes.
Okay, so actually, we've moved on from that previous discussion. We, we did look at, we, we did take some time to look and see if there were any options out there in the surrounding areas for us to purchase a property. Because the board in their strategic planning session had decided as a group that our, that we would prefer that we move Public Works into a different location versus where it was now. In the end, we could not find a building and we have allocated money and moved ahead and the renovations are probably being completed, if not already, very soon. They're in, it's actually being renovated right now. And in Public Works in general, I will say that I really appreciate the fact that our city manager and other staff initiated a classification and compensation plan so that we are at least able to get our entry level wages up to around $15 an hour.
Zoe Seiler asks, is the city going to continue looking for a new facility or no?
I believe the way that we left it, if I recall, was that we will keep feelers out there. I believe the way that we left it, if I recall, was that we will keep uh feelers out there. But in the meantime, we've gone ahead and, you know, renovated the kitchen, put in showers and new lockers and other improvements. So that's where we are right now, so.
Commissioner Lorette, similar question to you. Well, what is your uh vision for uh Public Works? And what's your understanding of of the next steps if, is to whether or not the city's gonna find a a new facility or not? Three minutes.
Uh, so, you know, one of the first things I did when I was uh after being sworn in last year was toward the Public Works Building with uh Commissioner Shortel. And I was appalled at uh its condition. And uh, I took it uh as something that I needed to drive forward and that uh is, you know, not, it was just not inappropriate for us uh to treat uh city workers, city labor uh in that way. I'm proud to say that uh tomorrow afternoon, I'll be touring the renovated space uh with the city manager. Uh, I think that uh it's ninety-eight percent done. Uh, there are some materials that couldn't uh that we have to wait on to get it one hundred percent complete. And my understanding is uh there's also a change order to add some additional work to the building. I'm proud of that. I am happy that we did that. And as Commissioner Sh- Shortel uh mentioned, I believe that uh s- uh starting wage entry level uh for us right now is uh, if I remember correctly, fourteen dollars eighty-two cents. It's just on the border of that fifteen-dollar minimum wage that everyone's been talking about. So I think uh we've d- we've made great strides in that. And, you know, I'm proud to have been uh, you know, a part of uh the team. And also, I consider myself just uh, you know, someone who has been uh, you know, adamant that uh we changed those conditions and we have.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Commissioner Lorette, the next question is gonna start with you. Uh, did the city's recent zoning code re- rewrite accomplish what you hoped it would? Three minutes.
Did it accomplish what I hoped it would? Um, uh, it accomplished uh what I believe the city needs. Um, I am not a uh believer that you can uh catch every nuance in code. I do expect that, you know, there will be times where there will be a need for variances. There will be times where uh, you know, someone is following the code to the letter and will have to change it because, you know, uh, we didn't anticipate that. Uh, so I believe that it's as good as uh we could get it at this, at this point. Uh, there are other things that I thought uh that I wanted to see in there. Um, additional uh participation by residents, which is, you know, something that I'm big on and will continue working on in the next four years. But I think overall that it's a a terrific uh document and it achieves about as much as we can expect such a document to achieve for us today.
Com- Commissioner Shortel, uh same question for you. Did the recent zoning code re- rewrite, that's a hard word to say, rewrite accomplish what you hoped it would? Three minutes.
Yeah, I would say, and I said this at a city meeting, you know, a zoning rewrite, it's sort of like a big planning document. It, you, we involve the public a lot in in going forward with this process. It took us eighteen months and there was a many opportunities for public input, which is as it should be. I completely agree with that. But in the end, it's, as Commissioner Lorette alluded to, you know, it's a compromise, right? It's as good as it can be as a collective vision for our rules and regulations moving forward. Um, does it accomplish what I hoped it would? Yes, it did. I'm really, really proud of our new zoning code. Uh, I think it's one of the most important accomplishments this board has done in the last four years. You know, we we've incorporated into it sustainability, environmental measures. We incorporated it into it incentives for some public art. We've um, we've gotten a lot better at controlling um mass and scale. We've really got a much better regulating plan for our downtown, including the street grid, which was so important to get adopted um and incorporated into that zoning code and to build in walkable blocks in the place that, places that we don't have them and also to build in the street typologies. I think the zoning code will increase green spaces and walkability in the downtown. Um, so I I've really been pleased. One other thing that's pretty cool in the zoning code is we have now uh allowed the rentals of accessory dwelling units, long-term rentals within our residential area, which was illegal before, which I really like because it provides a lower, you know, lower income housing to a certain, to a certain extent for folks.
You don't often hear the words "cool" in zoning code in the same conversation, but um. I'll take it. Uh, Commissioner Shortel, we'll, we'll start with you uh on this question. Um, what changes and updates do you hope to see in the city's comprehensive plan? Three minutes.
Changes and updates? Um, I think more of an emphasis on uh the environment, environmental issues, just trying to be a green city. I think more of an emphasis on inclusion, making sure that we're hearing all voices in our city. Um, I, you know, I have to confess that I was part of the steering committee for the comprehensive plan. So um, I kind of know where we ended up going. I think uh one of the things we stressed was diversity of housing. Um, those are some of the items that I wanted to see accomplished and I believe that they are in there. You know, that is out, that is something that we're discussing tomorrow, Dan. So Lionel and I have seen the draft of the comprehensive plan and I believe it's actually out on the website too. So folks can see, actually, uh, it isn't even a matter now what I want. It's, it's out there.
But you still gotta vote on it and there
Yes.
potentially some changes that could be made and.
Yes, yes, you know, um, I think it, I think what what I, one thing I will say about this process was I really appreciated having a fairly diverse steering committee. Um, and we had some really interesting insights and um contributions from folks, and I think you'll see that reflected in the goals for the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lorette, same same question to you, sir. Um, what changes do you hope will be in the comprehensive plan? Three minutes.
Yeah, uh, it is pretty much, uh, and I have a draft. I have not uh read it yet, just to be uh uh transparent about that. Uh, but hon- honestly, what I I am looking for aligns with the three things that I said uh that I'll be fo- I plan to focus on in the next four years. Increased diversity, uh re- uh residential infrastructure that is strategically built uh to handle the changing uh climate and uh additional resident participation, especially when it comes uh to public pro- uh projects.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner, is your, is your, if I've been saying your name wrong this whole time, is it Lorette or Lorette?
It's Lorette.
Lorette, I apologize. I I heard. I apologize. I I apologize for that. Um.
Uh, all good. It's all good.
Uh, so Commissioner Lorette, uh, in your questionnaires, both of you mentioned that you like to address issues in the residential areas of the city. Uh, what issues do you think need to be addressed and how will you address them? Three minutes.
Okay, uh, so really, uh, you know, the thing that's at the top of my mind is uh the infrastructure. We have rivers of water running uh in a lot of parts of the city. We have uh the stormwater uh, the stormwater master plan that outlines projects that need to be undertaken. So, you know, that to me is uh, you know, a challenge that we can't really uh set aside and that we do need to tackle uh in the residential area. And now, uh, okay, that's uh one thing. We have uh work that's going on with uh the lake. Uh, we have uh work that, you know, goes on continually uh with uh sidewalks and trees and everything else. But I I do think that uh, you know, the infrastructure question is the major one and it's going to cost and we have to figure out how to pay for that.
Commissioner Shortel, uh same question to you. Um, in your questionnaires, both of you mentioned you'd like to address issues in the residential areas of the city. What issues do you think need to be addressed and how will you address them? Uh, three minutes.
Yeah, I'm gonna repeat what Lionel said a little bit, which is stormwater's huge. We are addressing it. Um, we have started the North Woods Project, which is gonna keep the silt from continuing to run into the lake. And in addition, we're probably gonna be doing about another one-point-five-to-two-million dollars worth of stormwater infrastructure, uh rebuilding and um improvements and cleaning up of uh things that have gone wrong in the next several years. Okay, so that's already in our plan and but, and in our budget. Um, the lake and dam, once we stop the silt from going into the lake, then we need to, you know, assess the health of the lake and see what we need to do about. Um, is there too much silt in there? Is it causing a health problem? And I have to say, I'm, I am a little worried about the dam. I I think it would be good for us to make sure it's structurally intact, at least to take a look at it and see long-term what we need to do. Something else I'm really um passionate about, I think our um our green spaces in our city, in particular in our historic district, are really important for us to, they they help us define our character and identity. And several of them are really in need of, I would call it a renovation. Okay, so not just simple maintenance, but actually taking them down and and coming up with a new plan and and beautifying them. And then um another one for me, and this is something I actually was running on last time is traffic calming. That, you know, I brought, I hold commissioner chats and every single commissioner chat, the thing I hear the most about is traffic speed, traffic infractions. And yeah, I know that's typical for residential areas, but I would at least like us to start to take a look at that and see, you know, where are the high-risk areas? And is there anything um we can do short-term and long-term to start to address it? But as Commissioner Lorette just pointed out, all of this takes money and so do the streets and the sidewalks. And it's gonna take a lot of money and we can do what we can do every year, but it's going to, these are long-term projects, so.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Shortel, we'll start the next question with you. Uh, would you like to see the city continue to livestream public meetings and accept virtual comments? Three minutes.
Yes. I mean, I need three minutes to answer that.
All right.
I I have no problem live streaming the meetings. I think more people can, you know, participate. And I don't, I also don't have a problem accepting questions. Now, that's not really my call. Um, you know, that's, the mayor runs the meetings and runs the the general format of the meetings. So, um, but I, yes, I would like to accept questions.
Commissioner Lorette, now same question to you. Would you like the city to continue to livestream public meetings and accept virtual comments?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, honestly, it's uh, you know, the third thing on my list of things to do, right? Which is uh increased resident participation. I think it's important. Uh, you know, if I had a way of uh, you know, having it projected on everybody's uh living room wall every every time we had a meeting, I'd do that. But yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lorette, Zoe Seiler is in her comments. Hi, Zoe. Uh, and she would like to uh circle back to the police department thing for a second. Um, does the city still plan to hire a third-party consultant to review uh the police department policies and procedures? Three minutes.
Yeah, ab- absolutely. Uh, I, you know, and, you know, I I think, you know, whether or not uh, you know, this accreditation came down that way. To me, as I mentioned before, it's not a matter of whether, you know, they can pass the accreditation or not pass it. It's, you know, strategically important. You have to understand that you can't continue to do things in the way you did in the past when you're looking out toward the future, you know? And strategically, that that's what it is, continuous improvement. And no one should be, you know, shy, ashamed, or otherwise uh intimidated by that. It's just uh a smart way of operating.
Commissioner Shortel, same question. Uh, does the city still plan to hire a third-party consultant to review the police department policies and procedures?
Yes, I believe that we still intend to do that. I'll just say that for my part, um, I always looked at the accreditation and audit process as a beginning step to this. And, you know, have said publicly a couple of times that I definitely wanna see the report of that because that would give us information moving forward to address the scope of what this third-party consultant should be looking at. And, you know, um, so, yeah. Definitely intend to do that.
I feel like we're, we're having like almost a city commission meeting here, but uh Zoe Zoe Seiler asks uh if if there's a timeline for hiring that consultant. Do either of you know the answer to that?
I would just say, based on the uh publication of this press release today, that we're probably going to be looking at it sooner rather than later. I mean, there is no timeline at the moment, but I would anticipate that it will be high on our list.
Commissioner Lorette, do you agree with that as well?
Yeah, I I mean, you know, I I I would love to see a special called meeting just to address this. I think it's that important.
Commissioner Shortel, uh, we'll start the next question with you. Uh, which, what traffic cal- calming measures would you like to see implemented in the city? Three minutes.
Okay, so first of all, I think it's really important to understand that there may be short-term and long-term things that we can do, okay? Short-term, you know, my personal opinion is I'd love to see more residential policing versus sitting up on two seventy-eight, because I think that's, that's something that um a lot of residents have expressed to me that, that it seems like we see the police on two seventy-eight a lot these days and not so much in the residential area. Um, so that's one. Now, when we get to actual traffic calming, you know, that can be anything from tactile urbanism, like you see on, is it Howard Street that goes by the high school with the, the planters indicator, um, where they're narrowing the road there? It can be paint on, on um streets. I personally would like to see some speed tables in strategic places. I think, though, that we have to approach it in a comprehensive manner because every single person in Avondale's gonna say the traffic problem is worse in front of their house. And so we're gonna have to start that process by figuring out where is there an actual problem and what are the priorities in those, you know, which areas are priorities, which have the most traffic, which have the most risk, and go from there. So I'm not averse to any of the possible combinations of things that make ca- calm traffic, including bulbous, speed tables, crosswalks, I think are super important. We have very few of those in our, in our residential area. Um, but you know what? I'm not a traffic engineer and I'm not a traffic specialist. So I feel like, and I've always felt this way, when I need expert advice, I'm gonna hire experts.
Commissioner Lorette, uh same question to you. What traffic calming measures would you like to see implemented in the city of Avondale Estates? Uh, three minutes.
Yeah, uh, so I I I think you probably have gotten the idea by now that I'm not uh, you know, uh, a very uh, you know, I guess, a detailed uh person, like what uh measures uh, you know, whether there are speed bumps and where those speed bumps should go, or whether they're uh, you know, crosswalks or whatever else. Uh, you know, I I I think uh Commissioner Shortel is right. Yeah, we do need uh some folks who understand uh traffic and uh how to calm it. My uh, my take on it, though, is that I've seen some pretty interesting stuff uh about uh traffic calming uh in some parts of uh the greater Atlanta area, where they use uh sort of structures in between lanes uh for planning, et cetera. And I know I, you know, I used to drive through a few of these neighborhoods on, when I commuted. And I know that caused me to slow down, even though they look more like beautification measures. And so I don't think that uh the two are exclusive. You can calm, well, calm traffic and also enhance the neighborhood with it. Uh, but that's about, you know, all I know right now. Um, and I am definitely uh for uh calming traffic where it needs to be.
Commissioner Lorette, we'll start the next question with you. Uh, what have you done as a commissioner to improve, and this is from a reader? What have you done as a commissioner to improve uh the lives of resident seniors in Avondale Estates? And if you are re-elected, what will you do to continue improving the lives of seniors living in Avondale Estates? Three minutes.
Yeah, uh, so uh what have I accomplished in uh improving the lives of seniors? I think that uh I can point to the fact uh I think that I can point to the fact that I listen to them and I respond to them. That would be an accomplishment. Tangible, meaning physical accomplishments, I can't point to much. But one thing that I did do and that I will continue to do is to push for affordable housing for seniors in Avondale Estates. I think it's important that we have a mix of ages, which also falls in line with my, with my number one priority of diversity. That doesn't just mean diversity in ethnicity and race. It also means diversity in age and income. And I do want to see that we have affordable housing for seniors. I want to see us do simple things like around the park or building, you know, decrease the distance between benches to accommodate seniors who like to walk, but you know, they take more breaks than, you know, a young spry man like myself.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shortell, same question to you. What have you done as a commissioner to improve the lives of the city's seniors? And if you're re-elected, what will you continue to do or what will you do to improve the lives of the city's seniors? Three minutes.
Yeah, similar to Commissioner Larratt, I respond to seniors and listen to seniors. I think one of the great things in our zoning code is the ADU, legalization of ADUs. That provides a place for seniors. For instance, someone could have a small house or garage apartment behind their home that seniors can move into versus having a big house with a yard. And that, I, I actually know some seniors who are doing that in our neighborhood. So I think that is helpful. That is one concrete thing we have gotten done. I think honestly, you know, I came into it thinking we definitely should consider senior, a senior tax break and like wanting like Commissioner Larratt to provide senior housing. And not just affordable senior housing, but even middle-income senior housing. Because the unfortunate truth in Avondale is we don't have anything for seniors really, other than possibly these ADUs at this point or apartment living. We really have, I mean, we, it's not like Decatur where there's luxury senior housing, middle-of-the-road senior housing and lower-income senior housing. We've got nothing. So at this point, I'd like to just see something. But in terms of the senior tax consideration, I think that is something we've continued to discuss. We're still trying, we're still waiting to get information from the census. I myself, as I've delved into that a little more, have become, I, just much more aware that that's going to have to be very narrowly focused and focused not just on income, but you know, accumulated wealth and, and not just, not just across the board if you're over 65, you get a tax break. So we'll continue to explore that and I commit to continuing to explore that and to work as hard as I can to try and get some senior housing. By the way, senior, senior housing and affordable housing can now happen in our downtown by right. So someone can come in and build tho, that kind of a project by right, as long as they're building according to code.
Well, let's, let's spring, because the next two questions are kind of on that same track because they were all asked by the same person. So you talked about senior tax breaks. And so the question is, where, I'm going to try to synthesize these questions. Where is the city at with regard to providing some kind of a senior homestead tax exemption for residents to allow them to stay in their homes longer? And if Commissioner Shortell, we'll start with you and then we'll go to Commissioner Larratt.
Okay, as I just said, it's, we just had an update on this, I think it was last meeting. And we are still, we, we have approached Carl Vinson Institute to help us with this because we just don't know how much of a tax break we can afford to give right now. Avondale, you know, we're, that's part of the whole idea of trying to get the downtown developed. I mean, we have three ways of increasing our tax revenue. We can annex areas, which is entirely problematic, right? We can raise taxes or we can develop the downtown. And right now, we're still in the beginning stages of developing the downtown. We're not like Decatur where they started that 30 years ago and they followed their plans. And now everything's coming to fruition for them. You know, they're able to give tax breaks. They're able to require developers to put in some affordable housing. We're just not quite there yet, but we're trying to get there. We did approach CBI and they said that they, they cannot do a study for us until we get more information on wealth and income. So that's what we're waiting for. We're waiting for those specific details from the census to come out and then we will move forward with that consideration.
Commissioner Larratt, same question. Where is the city right now with regard to potentially implementing a senior tax break, homestead tax exemption?
Yeah, i- it's complicated. We did have our first meeting about this last week or two weeks ago, excuse me. And it's a tough question. How do you do it? And, you know, I won't even get into all of the details, but you have to answer questions like who is going to be eligible for it? What, under what parameters? And what can you do legally to put those parameters in, in place? You know, it, where is the money going to come from as well, you know? And, you know, the reason I say that is because we do have to figure out how we're going to pay for the tax break when it happens. I'm, I'm fully for it. I mean, I'm getting up there myself and, you know, I'd like to see some type of tax break. But at the same time, I do think that we have to be realistic and we have to do something that makes sense for the entire city. So, you know, that's, that's where I am with it. I think that's where the rest of the board is with it. But I think that we have begun to talk in earnest about it. And I, I think, you know, it's something else that we have to take a strategic view of because it is another part of the environment that is changing and you have to develop a strategy in order to get what you want. So yeah, this is all falling into play, into that, that part. And we'll, we'll get more information with the census and other data, data points.
So Zoe Seiler, and anybody can answer this that wants to answer it, I guess. She says, isn't there an affordable senior housing development planned on Olive Street or did that end up not going through? I remember a conversation about that earlier this year. Does anybody want to jump in?
I'll jump.
Okay.
So the, what we, what, what we, that was a very complex situation. Typically, you know, the developer will own the property and come to the board for conditional use. This was under our owns, our old zoning code, by the way, before our new zoning code was, was adopted. But in this case, what was happening was there was an agreement between a developer and a property owner to come and ask the board if we would give conditional use for that project, which was required under the zoning code. So the buyer wanted to be assured of that before they moved forward with the landowner. And the board did approve conditional use of affordable senior housing in that location. However, it need to be clear, that doesn't mean we approved a project, nor has any project been brought to us. As far as I, I know nothing about where that project is right now. But we have not yet seen a project brought to us.
Commissioner Larratt, we'll start the next question with you. Do you think the city should continue to expand via annexation? And if so, what areas should the city annex? Three minutes.
Okay, so great question. So should the city continue to expand with annexation? I think annexation is a, a tough proposition when the residents to be annexed are not behind it. We successfully annexed Berkeley Village, but the entire development was pro-annexation. I don't know that resources should be spent on lobbyists and other folks to annex through legislative, legislative means at this point. Maybe at some point in the future, but right now, I think our resources are better directed internally specifically towards stormwater and other things affecting residents.
Commissioner Shortell, same question. Do you think the city should continue to expand via annexation? And if so, what areas should the city annex? Three minutes.
So I agree with many of the points that Commissioner Larratt just mentioned, but I will add on to that, that we, we take a step back and we think about what areas we have annexed that have been beneficial to our city. So one of the areas that we've annexed was the area from Maple Street down to Sam's Crossing, which was ripe for transit-oriented development and we have seen development happen there to the benefit of the city. Another area that we've annexed is the Mill District area, which is the old duct and belt section, the big cement area. Everybody knows what I'm talking about when I say the big cement wasteland. That has been annexed to the, into the city and upon development, when that happens, will be a huge boon to our tax digest. So I, I just want to make sure that folks understand that we have grown in the past. Now, I agree with Commissioner Larratt. I, I do not like annexation by the legislative method. I prefer to have folks join us because they want to be part of our community and because we're doing wonderful things in our community. We're building connectivity and that they want, that they want to come in and be part of our community. That being said, we have a few areas that we really do need to be concerned about. I'll just name one. That is within, along 278, I think it's called, it's the old Avondale Station Apartments. They're older buildings. I can't remember the exact address, but they're right in the middle of our, our CBD. And they were not included as part of the city back in the day. I believe the reason why was because of the reason that they are apartments and because the residents at the time did not want apartments in their city. However, right now, they're in DeKalb County, in the middle of our central business district. And they can be developed at some point. If someone comes in and buys that property and tears what's on there down, they can be developed according to DeKalb County zoning. So I think we have to look at some areas like that and start really thinking about it and being prepared because those are, those are risky areas for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Shortell. And last question, and then we're going to move into closing statements. So Commissioner Shortell, we'll start with you. What is your opinion of the city's current downtown development authority? And what changes would you like to see, if any? Three minutes.
Okay, full disclosure, I'm a member of the Downtown Development Authority. When I came, when I was elected, at the same time, the Downtown Development Authority was undergoing some membership changes and it was deemed by both the board and the DDA that they would like to have a little bit tighter connection, tighter relationship. And, and so I was, I guess, I would say approved by the board to be a member of the Downtown Development Authority as, first as a representative of the, of the BOMC to represent our interests. And secondly, because the BOMC and the city have the biggest economic interest in what happens in the downtown of anyone, right? So I have been, I think the DDA is one of the most wonderful things that we have going on right now in our city. Our DDA doesn't just operate as the Downtown Development Authority, it also operates as the Main Street Board. And they have been instrumental in getting a lot accomplished. The events that are going on now, a new AD plus space parking lot, which totally funded by them, just working, working behind the scenes with folks to educate them about what's going on in Avondale. Marketing and promotion is huge through the DDA. So I've been, I'm very proud of what the DDA has accomplished and I think our downtown is a completely different place now than it was four or five years ago. And a lot of that I chalk up to them.
Commissioner Larratt, same question to you. What is your opinion of the city's current downtown development authority? And what changes would you make, if any? Three minutes.
Yeah, I think the DDA has accomplished a lot. And, you know, as an instrument for the city to use to speed up development, I think they've done a terrific job with that. Just as I am talking about shifting my focus from the Central Business District a bit to focus on the residential, I'd like to see the DDA shift its focus a bit from the real estate side of things to the small business side of things. What I mean by that is that I'd like to see the DDA be an enabler of the small businesses to succeed in our downtown. I think that, you know, there is the possibility and, you know, I'm, I'm just talking from things that I've read about other towns where you may have growth that eventually drives out small businesses. But I, I think that having small, unique businesses is a plus and I'd like to see that continue. So, you know, while the real estate part of things is important, I would like to see a shift more toward the small business enablement part of things. And to be honest, I mean, look, we, the DDA is powerful. It is, you know, an entity that has what, nine, $10 million, you know, at its disposal. And we don't have, you know, real control over that. And it is staffed by residents and members of city staff. So I think we do need to be careful in its operations. And I think we do need to provide direction as to where its focus is going, is going to be.
Thank you. And that is the conclusion of our forum. I'm going to give each candidate a few minutes to make a closing statement. Commissioner Larratt, we'll start with you. You have three minutes to make a closing statement.
Sure, thank you. I really enjoyed this and, you know, actually I, I enjoyed this kind of thing, just talking with people. So what I would like for everyone to remember is, you know, I, I live by the servant leadership model. I don't believe that you just automatically become a leader because you have a title. I believe that for the privilege of leadership, it is your responsibility to look out and enable the success of the entire city. One of the things that I like to tell people is that, you know, the city enjoys the successes. The leadership takes the blame and that's the way I see things, you know? I, you know, I guess it was also part of my military training. You know, the leader is the first to go out into the danger and the last to come in after the danger's over.
Thank you. Commissioner Shortell, three minutes to make a closing statement.
Yes, I would say that I agree, I, I, I feel like I enjoy the work of a commission, as I've said in the past. I feel like I'm someone who reaches out to the citizens. I always invite folks to meet with me, chat with me. I feel like I'm a consensus builder on the board. I feel like I'm experienced and able to, through this, understand the structure of the city and how to get things accomplished. I would just ask for folks' vote and I'm happy to serve. It's been a pleasure to serve. And I hope to continue to be there for you and to work for you.
Thank you, thank you both for attending, but also thank you for your public service. Thank you for all the candidates who have gotten involved and expressed an interest in public service. Local government matters more than, than people realize and more than people find an interest in. You know, we're always focused about what's going on at the state or federal level. We don't think about our local elections that much. And really, we should because they're the bedrock of our democracy. They are the, the thing on which everything else is built. So it's really important and we are very appreciative of anybody who takes a step towards public service and puts them, even the candidates who don't win. We appreciate them being willing to put themselves out there and take the time to do that. So this is the conclusion of our forum. Election Day is November 2nd. Uh, so this is the conclusion of our forum. Uh, Election Day is November second. Early voting is October twelfth. All of our elections coverage, including coverage of this forum, can be found at Decaturishvotes.com. If you appreciated this forum, if you appreciate us, uh, consider visiting SupportMyLocalNews.com. The ad for it is there on the right. Become a paying supporter. You can do it for as little as three dollars a month. It helps. It helps us continue to, to cover your community, helps us continue to put on these forums. Uh, our next forum is going to be tomorrow morning, Tuesday, September twenty-first, at ten thirty a.m. We're going to be conducting a forum with the candidates for Atlanta City Council, District Five. And all candidates, all five candidates have agreed to show up. So that forum's going to be a little longer. It's going to be an hour and a half. We're looking forward to it. Uh, thank you, everybody, for watching. We'll, we will see you tomorrow morning at ten thirty, and have a nice evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye.